Approval of the Child Nutrition Report, a 3.7 approval to declare items as surplus property. Our minutes.
Okay, if we look back at 3.2, I did not see any errors from our minutes from our previous meeting in November. If you look at 3.3, the Finance Report, I had a couple of different things that I'd like to present to you tonight. If you look at the first attachment, it is a comparison of chargeables for the year. And you can see from our comparison that we have, we are up in our gross production, revenue collection in motor vehicle, but down in our other three chargeables. We feel like that from everything that we hear and see and some reports from Vern Florence, feel like gross production tax will continue to increase and the outlook is positive, not only for us but for the state. We'll look at the second attachment. That is our investments. All of our investments through the 30th are up to date. There should be another report, maybe I didn't scroll down far enough on that first attachment. Let me open that back up. Actually, it's on the second page. So if you'll look at the second page, it's in pretty small print. But that is something that we've started doing here at the central office to track and compare our spending from 2017 to 2018. And you can see that what this has allowed us to do is kind of a check and balance with Terry and I. As I work on this report each month and track our expenditures in comparison to the previous year, it allows us to kind of look at these and get an idea of where we're at and where we're headed. Couple of things to point out for you, just noticing that our expenditures from last November to this November, we've had some increases and one of those is 530 and that's communication. Last year, we were switching our phone service provider. It was Burks that we used to go to. We became digital and started going through our internet. So although the upfront cost was more expensive with our GABR, our monthly bill is less. So that's why you can see a reduction in that from last November to this November. Couple of other things just to point out to you, some differences that you might see. 651 is an object code for appliances and that one kind of jumped out to me as I looked at that because we spent so much more last year and not as much this year. Last year, we purchased some washers and dryers for locker rooms and ice machines and haven't had those kinds of purchases this year. So that's where you'll see those discrepancies. I mentioned 530. You might look at 810. 810 jumped out to me because we had more expense in our dues and fees. So through the research, I'm working through that with Mrs. Owen and myself, we found that one of the allowable expenses for dues and fees this year is to use your Career Tech money through your general fund. And that's a good thing for our students because we're reimbursed for that and we receive that revenue. So any of our dues and fees for FCCLA, whether it's at the high school or middle school or our technology, we are reimbursed through the Career Tech for that money. If you have any questions about any of those expenditures that you'd like me to, maybe I can answer or look up for you. If not, we will move on to the Activity Fund Report. Year-to-date on our Activity Fund, all of those Activity Funds are in good shape. We continue to track those Activity Funds and especially in conjunctions with our fundraisers. And I believe that there is an attachment paying for it, is the attachment for our fundraisers. Is that in there?
It should be, under the other worrying fundraisers.
Okay.
The inter-account transfer.
Okay. So one of the things that we will get next month to show you all is the, we have produced a spreadsheet that is going to be able to identify fundraisers and those will be attached and highlighted next month so that you will be able to review those things and look at what fundraisers are completed in comparison to FY 16 and 17. So we'll have that ready for you next month. We are working with our programs to come up with budgets so that we can help reduce some of the expenditures through our fundraisers. We look at 3.5, the inter-account transfer. We added this today, this attachment today. This is our distribution of football gate. This is something that is normal and that we do each year. What we do is we break down the gate and then spread that out among all of our, or our sports to help those activity accounts. The total gate for the year was 12, was over $12,000. And when they took officials out and took the largest gate for football, that left $6,000 that was spread out amongst each of these sports that you see on the attachment. So high school basketball will receive $1,818.84 and then baseball, softball, track, golf and soccer, they get 20% of that total. So the breakdown is football gets the largest gate of the year, which I believe was the September 14th gate, and then 50% of all the rest of the gates. Basketball receives 30% of the football distribution of the gate and then baseball, softball, track, golf and soccer divide up the remaining 20%. And those are the figures that you see right there. We look at our Child Nutrition Report, 3.6, doing some comparison between last year and this year. I think I mentioned last month that Verlita said that it would pick up and we would serve more breakfast and lunch and that in fact is what has happened. We've increased both our lunches served through October and our breakfast served through October. So we've seen an increase in our students eating in the cafeteria. And then finally, our surplus. These are some surplus items that Longfellow there going through and surplusing some things that aren't working or broken or not being used to provide more space in the school. We have, as you well know, have a couple of bus farms that are full of equipment and making plans to surplus those and clean some of those things out this summer. Have any questions on consent agenda?
Motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Those items referenced in 3.2 through 3.7.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Hanson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Number four, vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for this school year 19. 4.1, general fund as referenced. 4.2, building fund as referenced. 4.3, child nutrition fund as referenced. And 4.4, gift fund as referenced.
If we look at 4.1, our general fund, 485 STS, those are active panels that many of our classrooms already have, but we are going to use some of our federal monies to purchase those and then we'll be reimbursed for those purchases. 486, those are active panels for just the middle school. And that was through a Champions of Excellence grant that was a non-competitive grant awarded to schools throughout the state. And we will also be reimbursed. And we're looking at about a $19,000 reimbursement for both of those, which won't cover the entire cost, but the majority of those. 493 are some desks for Mrs. Eckhart's class. It's going to allow for some more group work and make it easier to incorporate some of the newer strategies that we've been implementing through the K-20 Center in our professional development. And then 519, Mrs. Martini has worked with two or three different companies to have, to look at our HVAC units on the roof there at the middle school. The heaters are not working. And so Ms. Martini worked with two or three different companies and the vendor that you see there with Grey Dogg had the best quote for those replacement of those HVAC units. Any questions about the general fund 4.1? If you look at payroll, those are all substitutes payroll and pretty normal for our month. 4.2, building fund, just a few things on there. Number 42 was some removal of trees at Lincoln. We've had, there were some water problems up there and some leaves getting into guttering, some branches overhanging some buildings. So they did some tree removal, cut some limbs back to kind of clean that up. 44 through 46, we had a water leak at the barn, at the bus barn on Friday and those three contractors have begun to work on that and are still working on that to restore water back there for the restroom and the bus barn. 4.3, the Child Nutrition Fund. You see the large purchase order with U.S. Foods for $100,000. That is our main vendor that Verlita goes through and purchased. That is part of that inter-local cooperative that we have with Edmund Public Schools and that'll be our main vendor that we hope gets us through the rest of the school. And then there is nothing to report in the gift fund. Any questions about any of our expenses or purchases or purchase orders? If not, I would recommend that we approve 4.1, 4.2 and 4.3.
I make the motion that we approve 4.1, 4.2 and 4.3.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Hanson? Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
The attendants' report? Resignations, as well.
Okay, we have one retirement. You seem to know that Tracy Wynn is going to be retiring at the end of the year and we thank her for her service. She's done an outstanding job for us and works with our special ed students and she will be sorely missed. I know Mr. Feely and Mrs. Tucker who both worked with her appreciate all she's done for our young people. Communications, the only thing that I might visit with you about is that we have had some changes because of potential weather on Friday with our basketball tournament. They have moved that schedule up to Wednesday and we will be playing Wednesday. Ladybugs will be playing at 12:50 and the boys will be playing at 2:15 for potential weather issues. And you'll see later in the agenda, on the agenda, we're looking at sending some FFA students to Hutchinson, but I know Mr. Nation just talked to him today and with the potential weather, they're not sure if they'll be attending that either. It's going to be a decision as we get closer to that time. So I want to, at this time, thank Ms. Lovelace. She's going to talk to you a little bit about our Special Education compliance report that we received from the State Department. We received a great report from them and I wanted her to go over that with you.
A handout. I made an effort, Mr. Argos, this time. I missed you last time. That's okay. Although I think I've already. All right, so just kind of go line by line and keep it as brief as possible. The first part is, this is our report cards in the Special Education Department. And so that first, we are graded, so to speak, on 13 indicators. So that first one is graduation from high school. Now I need you to understand that there are 13 students living in this data. And so we graduated eight of 13 in that cohort. So what happens is, is that our freshmen this year will be the cohort that we look at in four years. Okay? So this was from four years ago and we graduated eight out of 13. So then our indicator two, and of course the state, we did not meet that indicator. Indicator two is the exits by dropout. And so there were nine students in this cohort, in this data that dropped out and two of them were students who received special education services. So we missed that mark as well. On indicators 3B through C, this is just participation on performance statewide assessments. Students who receive special education services, for the most part, take the same test that everybody else does. We have some very small population of students who take an alternative assessment. But if you'll notice, our reading, we did meet that indicator. So these are students who receive special education services. 19% of them were proficient in reading and in math, 12%, so we're approaching there. Then we go to indicator 4B, significant discrepancies or suspensions. And so we don't have that at all. What they look at is how many suspensions were there in the regular ed population compared to the special ed. And so we actually did really well there. School, our least restrictive environment, this is getting our students who receive special education services as close to that regular ed curriculum as possible. And we do a really good job of that in this district. The state target is 66 and we're at 96% there. So then if you'll look at indicator six, those are our early childhood environments. Early childhood equals 3 to 5 11, so right before they turn six. That's what early, this is the population of special education we're looking at. And we did not meet that, but it's the way our program is set up. We have three-year-olds who come for services and they, all of those students are students who receive special education services in that setting. And so we don't have typical peers in that program. So it is 100%, you know, the setting is a special ed setting. And so we do get to count if those students actually attend like a daycare or something like that. We do get to count that, but that's why we get dinged on that one quite a bit. Our percent who increased rate, okay, so these are our outcomes. And if you'll notice that there are three outcomes we look at. We look at positive social emotional skills, acquisition of using knowledge and skills and using, use of appropriate behaviors. And so all of our students in our program have growth. So yay that. I mean, you know, like we are showing growth. 100% of our babies are growing. So that's exciting. And then if you'll notice that just that percent functioning within age expectations in that first domain, we hit 77% in the second domain, 66, and then that third is 77. So what I'm telling you is if we can get them into our program, we can help. So early intervention is super important. I am so excited about this next indicator. I could do a cartwheel. Last, when I presented this last time, I had to tell you, we did not meet this indicator. But I can tell you, we have met this and exceeded this indicator this year. And a lot of it was principals helping me out with that. At the meetings, we open up the computer for those parents to fill out the parent survey before they leave because of what we've learned is if we just say, please hand, will you please that? Oh yeah, we'll do that. Yeah, we'll do that. And don't. And so I've had tremendous principal support on that and so we made it that time. So I'm super excited about that. Disproportionality of race or ethnic representation. We never want to see more students with an ethnic category than what nationally is normed. And so we've never had that, that receives special education services. So we've never had that problem here. Also then, we don't want, we have 14 categories that we can categorize students and we don't want a significant percentage higher than the national norm. And so we're good on that. We don't over-identify, so to speak, in a specific category. Our child find, this is when they move from our Sooner Care, which is Part C, to us, which is Part B. And we have a certain timeline that we have to meet. And so we did that with 100%. We've not missed any Sooner Care kid. If they get referred to us, we have that, everything that we need in place in place in a timely fashion. And then of course, all of our secondary students have a secondary plan in place in their IEP. So we met that mark as well. So that's part of the figuring. We look, the state looks at that 13, that 13, those 13 indicators. So if you'll go to the next part, then they start talking about the compliance matrix. So they put that together as part of our report card too. And so they look back on indicator four and if we met it, we get two points on that. And nine, 10, 11, 12, if we met those indicators, we get, we get points for that. We've never had any type of, since I've been director, we haven't had any complaints or mediations or any due process hearings. And so that's, that's what they're saying that is not applicable in this district. I feel like we do a real good job of communicating with our parents and so that's evidence of that. Timely completion of monitoring requirements. Last year, we did need monitoring and so everything that we turned in was on time. Longstanding non-compliance, we could have gotten two points, but we only got one. And the reason it was, is that I don't know if you remember, the first year I was director, we didn't meet the 45, 45 days compliance. We did not meet that indicator. And so we've got to go one more year on that indicator before we can actually get two points on that. And let me tell you, next year, we will be getting two points on that. And so also just timely count, child count was, the data was ready and end-of-year data submissions were all ready. The reason we didn't get our score this time was that certification, which is a second process, was I think a couple of days late. So we didn't get our points on that. And then attendance of all child count and end-of-year training, I go every year. They set up the trainings to make sure that we get those points as well. So we had a possible point on that matrix of 20 and we got 18. So then they combined everything together and they figure it all on page two, which gives us a rating of 85.71%. And if you'll turn to the last page, you'll see that we are Tier 1, which because 85% to 100% is meeting requirements. So this year, we met the requirements. Yes, yay. Last year, you know, we were a Tier 2, but we did everything we were supposed to do. We did all of our professional development. And we're even going to do more professional development this time through the RML grant, which I can't wait to talk about later on in April. But that will also count as the professional development on this as well. So we'll get some extra points. I always will look for any way I can get an extra point. And so those, do you guys have any questions on this? I know it's a lot, but.
Could you be a little more competitive?
Not on this. Thank you. Yeah, it was awesome.
Appreciate that. We do appreciate that.
I am scared.
I can feel the heat behind you.
If you tell me I'm going to get a point, I'll go do what you mean to do. That's it. I'm telling you.
I know.
So much on hunting.
I'm happy you're here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we met requirements this time.
Yay.
Yay, yes.
Principal's report. So are we ready? Are we finished with the presentation?
Yes, we are.
Principal's report?
No, 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 no. It was perfect, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, we at the high school have been working on a lot of different things. One thing that I, that I do want to point out is we, you know, when we talk about student services, we talk about a lot of different things with that. One of the things that has been a focus for us at the high school this year has to, to tell our story better, to get our, the things that we do in the classroom out to the community and to the patrons of ALBA. We, you know, it's one of those things that we, we do a lot of really great things and a lot of times we're the only ones that know about them. And so I've kind of challenged our staff and they'll kind of talk a little bit about that. But I told them that the first of the year, we have to do a better job of telling our story to the community and showing the things that we do well. And because you know, a lot of people, real quick to point out the things that we make a mistake on and that we mess up on. But, but I feel like if we do a lot of positive things, those things will kind of offset those, those things. But we, we want to strive to create a respected environment and we want to meet the learning needs of each student. That's one of those are the things that we try to do. We want to push kids to get out of their comfort zone a little bit and achieve more than they thought they could. And I've got a couple of ladies that I'm going to introduce you to in here in just a little bit that do that every day. We want students to be actively engaged. We want them to conduct themselves in a positive manner and we want to build quality relationships with adults and community members. Those are the things that we try to push every day for our kids to do. Those are kind of, the underrated things that are not really curriculum things that we do, but they're things that are real necessary for our kids to be successful. And a lot of times we get lost on the things. We get so caught up in teaching math and teaching science and teaching those things that we want them to be good citizens. We want them to build positive relationships with community members and do those kinds of things well. And we, you know, at ALBA, since I've been here, we have done a really good job of pushing our kids to the community. Our kids are involved in a lot of different things. I think they go and they represent our town and our school really well. When they leave and go to a different town and different things that's, when, and I'm a lot of different places in the state. I have friends all over and our reputation in ALBA is outstanding. From Southern Oklahoma to Northeastern Oklahoma to, I've got a lot of friends, a lot of different places. And everything, they say, ALBA's pretty good. And I said, no, it's great. It's really a good place to be from. And the people that we do everything, real quality and it's real first rate. And I said, from the athletics, because that's kind of what they see. But I said, come, come look at my teachers. You want to see some, you know, it's not just about what you see on the basketball court and football field. Come look at my classrooms because they do a really, really good job. We have been working on ACT state assessments and that's kind of what I was going to talk about and do those kinds of things. But we recently gave, on November the 9th, we gave the ACT Aspire, which is kind of the early indicator for the ACT test. We give it to all freshmen and all sophomores in those four areas, reading, math, science and English. And it kind of is a precursor to the things that are coming later on. And so I will tell you that we did some ACT professional development in August and they used, for lack of a better word, kind of dummy data that wasn't our data to do that because we obviously hadn't done it yet. So they went through and showed our teachers the way it works. And it really was, it was good, but it was hard to relate to because it wasn't our stuff. Now we have some of our stuff in there. They're going to come back in January. We have those two days in January that we're going to do some PD. The lady's either going to come by, I don't think she's coming here physically, but she's going to do a webinar or however, I don't know how they're going to, we haven't worked out those details. But she said, I'll have you ready for that PD in January so you can look at your data and do that. Some teachers have already requested. This time, she pushes me a lot to look at, she's like, hey, I need my login. I know, I've got to figure out what I'm doing here. I need my login. So I got to be on my toes because she keeps me on my toes to do that. So I try to give her login. I said, well, I'm not ready for that yet, but I'll give it to you. You can hit and poke around. Maybe you can teach us what we're doing. So she's real, she's real good about that and like I said, pushing us to be, to be on top of it right now. Her patience meter is not very much. And so she goes, which is good. That's a good thing because, because she works. We are going to give, we gave that on August or on November the 9th. We'll give it again on February 12th and we'll give it again on April the 10th, which will give, let us compare where we're going. This is real comparative to the math testing that the younger grades are doing, that they show progress throughout the year and kind of where we're at. But it'll also show the things, if we have a hole in our curriculum somewhere that we're not, that we're not addressing like we should, it'll show up on this and we'll be able to go back to those particular objectives, those state objectives and figure out maybe where we're weak and maybe we can target our professional development with our teachers to, to better serve our kids on those specific indicators when we do that. So that's kind of what, that's kind of the big picture of where we're going with the ACT Aspire. One of the things that we did at the first of the year is when I talked to teachers, literacy is a big thing to raising test scores. When you look at research and kids raise ACT scores, literacy is a really big thing. They feel like if kids are literate and they can write about certain things, even if it's math, even if it's history, if it's those things. We get some writing in English, but I've kind of, at the first of the year, told our teachers and Mr. Feely, as a curriculum director, kind of told us, well, I want you, this is the direction I want you to push. So we push and we do those things. But I tell my teachers, I would like for them to have a writing element in their classroom at least once a week. Now depending on the subject area, you're going to get more than you are in others. But even my math teachers are incorporating some of that and it's a struggle. Kids struggle with writing about math. And so you'll see. And so you'll see when these ladies have a little brief presentation that they're gonna do, but it's, we're gonna see really good results from this. When we get into it and we start getting into the details of what we're gonna do, our kids are really gonna benefit from this. This is a really good long-term plan that our kids, it's not necessarily a four-year thing, it's not gonna be that long-term I'm talking about. I'll be excited. I know I'm not really on the agenda to give principal's report again, but I would really like to come back in the spring, because I feel like I'm gonna get to brag a little bit about what we've done this year. So we may work that in. Mr. Argyle might be able to slide me in, give me about five minutes somewhere down the line. But I feel like it's gonna be really outstanding in the springtime. I feel like we're gonna have some really good results of the things that we're doing right now. So I do want to come back and share those with you, but I do want to introduce Mrs. Murrow, who was our rising star this year in the building, voted by her peers, and Mrs. Ty Ree, who was voted as a rising star last year. So I've got my two people here that are young teachers in the profession, but are challenging kids every day and doing an outstanding job for what we ask them to do. So I think, Mr. Murrow, you gonna go first?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so as most of you know, I teach sophomore English and I teach two freshman classes as well. And I incorporate strategies in my classroom on a daily basis, because our main focal point is literacy. But I'm only gonna talk about three strategies that I use in my classroom. And one strategy that I use, I like to incorporate visual images and I like to do journal prompts. I find that students, they don't really like to write. And so at the very beginning of the year, I ask them to bring a notebook and we use that as their journaling. And I'm gonna show you an example of what I do. So for complex texts, short stories, I give my students like a pre-reading check and I do a PowerPoint presentation with questions and visuals that's the handout going out right there. And I give them instructions to number their papers based on the questions, based on the slides that I'm presenting. And then, and we go through the questions. And basically, for example, what I'm presenting today is The Lottery by Shirley Jackson. And I ask them questions, what's the definition of a lottery? And then I go on to say, how is the rituals and how are communities, hold on, what is the purpose of tradition and rituals in people's lives and communities? That's one of the questions on there. So after the students answer those questions, I actually give them pictures at the very end and then I ask them, how does that relate to the story that we're about to read? They have to make a prediction. And my students go through and they do this individually and then we do a think, pair, share strategy where they get into groups and then they answer those, they answer the questions individually and then they're starting to talk amongst themselves. So it's opening up, it activates prior knowledge and concepts, and then they build on those concepts, like what are, what do we think this story is going to be about? And then I go back and we read a story together, such as The Lottery. And then after they read, then I open it up as a whole class discussion and I give them post-it notes, because this is my second strategy that I use. So we open it up to a whole class and then I, on my boards, I have questions and then they actually like summarize what the story was about and how did it compare to the prediction that they had? Was it anything like what they had predicted? And then they come in and they post those, their predictions or their information on my boards. And then we open it up to a whole class discussion. And then that activates critical thinking skills. So now they've been introduced as a class, maybe from others' point of view, that they've never even thought of before. And my students have really responded to this strategy. And it's one of my favorite strategies, because it's actually incorporating the ELL learners. They're saying that because they have a visual, that it's actually helping them with the story. So it's one of my favorites. Another strategy that I use is annotating text. So at the very beginning of the year, my soph, especially with my sophomores, I teach them how to annotate. And I'll give you an example. I model, there's another worksheet, yes, symbols. So I actually teach them how to annotate. I give them a symbol chart and I make them copy off the board, because it's visual. I want them to be able to see it, but I want them to be able to copy those symbols. And then I model for them how to annotate text. And what that does, it's going with the more complex texts that we have in class. And when they do that, when they actually write all that information down and then I have them do it themselves, it does several things. It helps them decipher important information in the text, it helps them address the validity and the bias of information, primary sources versus secondary sources, which is very important. And it helps them to slow down, because they just wanna run through a text and they have no idea what they just read. So they go, they slow down intentionally so they can understand the text and they make it, look at the key details more closely. And I tell them, this is very important because ACT, the ACT is very important, because they're gonna have information in there that they're going to have to infer. And it's all about inferencing on a deeper level. And so if they can annotate the text and then they, we talk about it, we go back to doing like a think, pair, share activity, where after they get together as with a partner and they talk about, well, maybe I didn't get the connection, did you get the connection? And then I start grouping them into larger groups. And eventually they're like, oh yeah, I never saw it from that point of view, I get it. So it's actually helped with my students in that respect. And the last strategy that I want to talk about is commit and toss vocabulary. Last year, I just had my students write the vocabulary words down and we had a few games and I didn't like it. And so this year, I have a friend who told me about commit and toss, but she had a whole another name for it. And so what they do is they get in, I give them vocabulary words on Monday, and then Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, they come in and they have a sheet of paper, I give them the word, and they write the definition down on the word and they use a sentence. And then they crumple the piece of paper and they, now when I tell them to toss it, they toss, because that's their favorite thing to do. And then when they toss that piece of paper, it's anonymous, so no one knows, and they open it up and then I choose, I select students to read it out loud, tell me what the definition is, how do they use it in a sentence? And then some of them, yes, it's funny. But the scores have improved on their vocabulary. I've seen improvement on their scores. And ACT, we talked about that and the pre-ACT with my sophomores, they told me, Mrs. Murrow, did you realize that some of those words are on the ACT? I said, I told you they were gonna be on the ACT. I told you, that's the whole purpose of why we're doing this. So not only am I seeing improvement, but I'm seeing improvement on the ACT as well from those students. So, and I do want to say thank you for the professional development. The presenter, I did get to speak to her one-on-one and she did give me strategies to use in the classroom and I have those, I just haven't incorporated those into my lesson plans, but they will be next semester.
The K-20.
The K-20. It was wonderful. She actually gave me ideas of how I could incorporate that, so it was wonderful.
She was great. Okay, my turn. Great. This is your six. Okay, so I did a PowerPoint, because I have to organize my thoughts or I'll be all over the place, so let's see if this works. Okay, what's the code? Oh, okay. Great. Okay, awesome.
Like when it works, I'm just like, yes, okay.
It's another good reason to have a room.
Yeah. I know. Well, okay, so I also have handouts in case you can't see it very well, or if you wanna look at something a little bit longer. There you go. Okay, I would like to also touch on what she was saying and how much they have improved and now we're using it in all of our science classes. We do reading and writing once a week as well and I have seen improvements. I gear mine more towards the ACT standards of the science section and I have them full data and they look at the diagrams and different graphing and they are able to then write on that. And then that is going to hopefully improve their scores, but I have not seen anything yet from Mr. Potter about it. So anyways...
He's like, I promise.
I just need to know what I need to work on. Okay, so then going into now what I do in my classroom and what all of the science teachers do, we are always doing hands-on experiments so that they can understand how to relate the material in the real world. And where we get our information from, every one of us, Ms. Meyer, Dr. Meyer, and Mrs. Manning, we are all a part of the OKSci group, the Causler Group, and the NGSS Group. And in those groups, we are able to see what students are doing at the state level with the standards, also in with the national level. So we are giving our students the experiences that really they're getting all over the country and we can share, we ask other teachers what they're struggling with or how we have this issue in our classroom, what have you used? And we share different material and all of these experiments. And even, we all did a training together at the college that did correlate with observations and investigations with the standards. So we are really trying to give them everything that they need to be successful. So here's what I do. Okay, this is my electricity and magnetism unit. They build their own current to see open and closed circuits and they work with generators for magnetism and how that generates an electrical current in the coil. And I don't know, we have a potato that's making electricity over there and just really visual for that unit. We also do light and sound. This is just all about that oscillating waves, which I'm probably boring you, but we did art with the pendulum swing. They were able to do different designs with how that functions and then they tuned sound based on the mass in the cup over there of water. And then we made a design where we could see our voice and what that wavelength looked like on the wall. We even played music with it. And then we all went down to the auditorium and talked about the acoustics there and in dead spots and how they, why they do what they do with sound. This is for my life science. We have a lot of IEP students in that hour and I really love giving them, they make models, this is like all the different cell organelles. We did an osmosis lab and they really could see the visual of the water going in and out of the egg and how it deflated or it expanded. We also did RNA transcripts and then I tried to do live bacteria and algae for them to see those cells. Another thing that we did was weather and water cycle. They made, and this is any level, that second picture is actual like a water station that this student made. And she has some major learning disabilities and she was able to make her pictures, she made a wind gauge and a barometer and we, she had her whole cord set up and she gave a presentation on that and I was pretty proud of her and it was awesome. And then we did the water cycle to see what the water drainoff looks like. You can't see the picture very well, but on the left, there is a plant growing and it really is fertilizing that water compared to what the ground looks like, the groundwater looks like after, you know, where we just have, say, the clater. And then on the right, we did water quality sampling, so the different office tools in there represent insects and how they can determine the water quality based on what insects are living in the water. So probably, you're probably not interested, but I love it. And they loved it and they understood it. This is our energy in motion. I try to, since obviously it's motion and energy, we move all around the school and they're on the ramp and they're in the gym and they're making all these designs to try to find that speed and acceleration. We deal with Newton's laws and they make wind and water mills to transfer the energy and pick up a cup. Then I have, this one's my favorite, I just did this fractional distillation. We use grape soda and based off of the molecular mass and the boiling points, we were able to separate out water. You can see water in that picture is completely clear and then even produce carbon dioxide, it changed the pH indicator and they're like, whoa, what's happening? And so that relates to the crude oil industry and how refineries separate things based off of their boiling points and related it to the whole oil field industry and watched a video on the different jobs that you can have in that field. And then also they had to do the data analysis on the computer. So that one was really involved and they did a formal lab write-up to add in more of that writing. And, oh, and then this is what we're getting ready to do, more so in the life science class. We are gonna have fish in the tank and we've already planted some seeds up top, so we will have a lettuce garden on the top and it's gonna be a whole ecosystem. So the fish are fertilizing the plants and the plants are filtering the water and they can see how important that is and then also the nitrogen cycle and they are gonna learn about water quality testing. So I have a little video, just so you can get one minute of my classroom. And he's not gonna play. Please. Hold on. I'll make it. He's my girl. He's my girl. Ready, set, go. That's cool. There we go. Ah. Dammit. I think I'll watch it twice. Okay, so that's kind of an example. I actually make a lot of those videos for our labs and I post them to Google Classroom for when students are gone, because as Mr. Potter said, we have a lot of involved students. So they can get on and they can see a summary of our lab and the results that we got, so hopefully they're not missing out on too much. Also, they, a lot of these labs, I'm able to get like that instant feedback as they're investigating and see what they're maybe struggling on or what they are understanding and how we can go with it further. And I see all different learning styles and knowledge levels that I can work more with one-on-one over here while they're exploring more in a different direction. So I love it, they always enjoy everything that we do. And I also see the results on the test, because I sometimes will have students come in and be like, oh, I don't know if I learned anything, because they don't realize that they're learning it, because it's fun, and then they do really well on my test. So it's sticking, it's retaining and hopefully they are able to understand how it relates to the real world. So that's what I have. If you have any questions, thank you.
Yes.
We care a whole lot. You're doing a great job. We do care a whole lot.
I'm really excited about what's going on at the high school. You guys can come up anytime you want to and just walk around. You know, I went out, I had a five-minute meeting last week or week or so ago and told my teachers, kids are running everywhere, keep them in your classroom, quit, they're loud, they're running everywhere, keep them in doing those things. The very next hour, first hour, Dr. Meyer's got a physics class, well, there's some kids out there being loud, I come out to him, I said, what are you guys doing? Well, I can't see him, he's at the bottom of the stairs and they're doing a parachute, measuring gravity with parachutes. And I'm like, he's, I was like, oh, sorry, Dr. Meyer. Let me get out of your way, keep doing what you're doing. And so it's a really good environment and kids are being pushed and it's learning and teachers are doing outstanding job and it's really, really good. So thank you guys for doing that, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
And that's us.
Thank you. Thank you. Very nice. Proud of you.
Number seven, I know the current business. We're not very, yeah, you may need to get it.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me. I'm gonna get a copy of that.
Here, I can give you mine.
Look at all of this community, we're all, we'd be happy to share.
It's in green, right here. Seven point one, discussion with possible for action, vote to approve the following board policies as referenced. And I want to thank Shane for meeting with Mr. Argyle looking at all those and we'll refer it back to you.
After watching those videos and then talking about this, it's a little, it's gonna be a little dry.
Boring.
Yeah. So all of these policies, and I guess what I'll do is just briefly run through them, very briefly and just kind of maybe add a little bit of note here and there, but all of these policies pertain to federal audits, federal guidelines, could be a change from the No Child Left Behind to ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act. So that's kind of the basis for each one of these. I can tell you that I visited with some questions that Shane had, I visited with Julie Miller, the OSSBA attorney, to question her and ask her some few things and bounce some things off her with regard to our policy. Also checked with Beau Raney, our school attorney, on a few things. So I feel like all of these policies are relevant and are needed and we have to adopt them, but let me run down through them. They want to make sure that you're using your local money as you should and your federal money as you should. And that's what that policy pertains to. CBBA, grant policies and procedures. This is something that is also, when they start, when you start receiving federal monies, there's competitive and non-competitive grants. And we want to make sure when we have any of those, that not only are we aware of it from a financial standpoint, so we add it 10 days to be able to review that. Because we need to make sure that that money goes into the correct revenue stream that it's supposed to go to and that we also track those expenditures because we will be audited on all of these things. CBB, B, is internal controls. This is something that basically is my responsibility to make sure that we have a check and balances down there at the central office and that we review all of these federal programs and ensure that it is, it is, it is being used correctly. And I'm not connected. Is anyone else connected?
I'm not connected.
Okay, that's all right. CLB, equipment accountability. This again, anything purchased with federal funds or federal monies needs to be accounted for. Used to always, I can remember as a teacher marking that Title I equipment, anything purchased with federal funds needed to be audited and inventoried. And that's just to ensure that we're practicing that. COB is procurement. They removed the word food and it pertains to any items purchased with federal funds that it is audited and counted for and inventoried correctly. And that is with COBR, the regulation. Federal programs complaint resolution. This is with regards, and I visited with Bo Raney, our school attorney, about this. This has to do with programs, not an individual complaint resolution. And you'll remember that the board accepted the complaint resolution through the Office of Civil Rights with Bo. That is for an individual. This is for a program. And, and we must adopt this resolution. DBD is conflict of interest and this is just for our, for our district to ensure that when we do have any employee that does have an outside business that were to work for us, that the wages and the amounts taken on those W-2s are correct for auditors. DDC, we combined a policy that they sent with our current policy just to reduce the amount of paperwork. And this is basically, has to do with our references, is a federal requirement, a state requirement on that. Julie Miller advised me to just go ahead and merge this with the current resignation policy we have. And it has to do with just from the standpoint of assisting employees finding a new job and background checks for those employees. Salary schedules. DER one, visited with Julie again about this and its required policy. Although we have a negotiated agreement, the auditor will still require that there is a policy on file for our salary schedule. DEER, travel and expenses. The major difference in this was dependent care costs can't be paid, but we already have many of the outline and regulation procedures in here. What we did is we matched up our mileage and our reimbursement rates with this new policy so that they both work together. DMB, professional growth and development. It is not a federal policy. This is a new state policy. Every teacher creates a professional learning focus. They have checkpoints that they meet with their administrator. It is a requirement, it is a part of the TLE. So every teacher is working on that and meeting with their principal as they create their own professional learning focus. And I can tell you, that's been a really good thing for our teachers. I think they've enjoyed it, so. DPao, Director of Federal Programs. This is to ensure that we have someone that reports to the, that is the director of the federal programs and that is myself. That has to be noted and then the process for identifying that person. EHBCR four, this is providing special education services. Federal funding once again comes into play here and we have to have this policy adopted as a district. EHBE, this is our limited English proficiency instruction. We have a policy on file, but the referencing to the Every Student Succeeds Act has replaced the bottom of that, so that's why we adopt it at this point in time. Alternative education. This is just the emphasis on using any of those funds when we serve any alternative education student that not only is an inventory, but then we also are able to track any expenditures in case of an audit. FDP and FD, student residency. They made mention in both of these policies of McKinney-Vento Homeless Assurance Acts. So again, the protection of our students for a free and appropriate education that are homeless and the federal monies that are involved in servicing those students. FDAH, education of migratory children. This is something we just received some notice today from the State Department for next year's enrollment. It's another indicator for enrollment paper that we must identify and give our students. They, the state wants to identify, are those students migratory and are we serving them as we should? So this again is another policy, not only to meet the state, but then federal requirements for that money. And then finally, GJBA, student recruitment access to students and directory information. Each year you adopt this policy to meet federal requirements for our district. Any questions about any of these policies? Thank you, Shane, for your help and your good questions because I was able to visit with Julie and know about many of those. Thank you.
Motion.
I make a motion to accept the policies. Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Seven point three, can we vote on all of these as one? We have to vote for each, okay. Discussion with possible board action, vote to elect the following as new members of the Board of Directors of the Oklahoma Public School Investment Interlocal Cooperative.
Excuse me.
Most of these names, Tom Deegan, Superintendent Lot Public Schools, Howard Hampton, Superintendent Bishop Public Schools, Terry Grissom, Superintendent Asher, Roger Adair is Asbell. That's the business, Director of Business. And we send Ms. Owen as a member of that, as am I, to attend their conferences. Rick Gallin, a board member. Previously, the board has always voted yes for all these candidates. I would recommend that the board do that again this year also.
Well, I'd make the motion that we vote for all these fine people.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.